Today I have Mike Kader, the council president, and Johnny Kader, the owner of Top Class Limousine. Mike, we are going to be talking about the impact. Thank you for taking the time of giving us an update on what's going on in our city. How is this affecting? And we have Mike John Kader here, who is a business owner in Yonkers of Top Class Limousine, the best limousine in the city of Yonkers and around where, you know, the entire West Chesa County. Am I wrong? Am I wrong, Johnny?
You are never wrong.
Never wrong. That's my type of guy. Mike, give us an update. But, you know, and I wanted, I would like you to tell us about what's going on because this is serious. But when it affects us personally, it becomes kind of personal. Because now we don't think we know the pain, we know the pain. So give us a...
You know, Ben, thank you. I know, you know, yesterday, you know, you made a post on your, on your website and I want to thank you. And I want to thank everyone that's reached out, called and texted, not just me, you know, my siblings, my nieces and nephews. It's a punch in the gut, you know, you know, when you find it out, you know, we scratch our head and say, you know, how is everyone getting it? How did my parents get this, you know, social distancing? They don't drive, they don't, they literally don't leave the house. But it just goes to an example of how this is easy to get, you know? I mean, it's easier catching this virus than it is a common cold. You know, my brother, you know, the eldest of the Kader family. You know, John, you've been for about a week now, you know, you've been good. I remember when my brother John had it.
So Johnny, Johnny was positive?
Yeah, John. Ben, there is one thing that, you know, one side effect that John did have when he was COVID positive. It affected his thumbs. He wasn't texting as much and he was pretty quiet. So it does silence, you know, that is a good...
Wait a minute. There is a good sign, there is a good thing about this?
Yeah, you know, I went on about two and a half. Well, I was a little worried about big guy a little bit, but you know, he was pretty quiet. So, so, you know, it does silence sometimes, you know? So if there is a side effect, but you know, John will tell you how it was. It was hard, you know, and we were all worried about him.
Now, Mike, are we on our way down? Did we pass the plateau, the tip of the mountain? Because I know that numbers, at least national, nationwide, the numbers are coming down. Looks like it's stable, but to lots of people in Yonkers, he doesn't feel that way. How do you think?
You know, the data that I get, Ben, it's, it's, it's open source. It's, it's out there. I don't look at a national level, you know, I'm not worried about other states, you know? Obviously, I'm worried about Yonkers. You know, there's fear and anxiety, you know? I think the current numbers, I haven't gotten them still Saturday morning, you know, we're well over 4,000 positive cases. There are tons and tons of people that need to get tested. That, that's not, you know, that's not happening. You know, the, the common theme that I am hearing, that I am pleased about on the federal and state level is that testing and recognizing who had it, who may have had it well before this March hit, you know? Hit, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's reports that people were having symptoms as early as December and doctors were thinking this is just, you know, some type of flu or cold. The key to this is two things, testing, see who is asymptomatic and of course, you know, the antibody. That's how we're going to get out of this as a country, not just as a city, as a, you know? And, you know, and I even spoke to my brother John, who is feeling better, you know? You know, John is one of the lucky ones who's getting, you know, now, you know, to get tested, you know, donate blood, you know, for those, you know, for, for those that do need it. But, you know, generally, if, you know, if I go walk on right now, Takahoe Road, South Broadway or Rivendell and, you know, I tell people, hey, things are getting better, they'll look at me like if I had two heads. There's fear, there's anxiety, there's confusion right now, you know? And our most densely populated areas of the city of Yonkers.
Now Johnny, let's bring this to you. You weren't infected. Why did you take the test as a precaution just to find out? Or did you feel something that drove you to take the test? How did you feel after you took the test? Give us an overview on, on your condition.
Well, the symptoms that I, you know, experienced weren't really the symptoms of COVID at that first 24 to 48 hours. But I noticed after the second day, things were again better and I was trying different meds and so forth. So that was Friday. So Monday, Monday or Tuesday, I went to my doctor, got the test and a week later it was positive. I knew it was positive, I just did it just to do it, just to help with the, um, given the city and the county and the state that there's another one that's got it. Help with, if there's anything that could be done with, you know, getting an accurate count of infections. But I knew I had it that weekend and the symptoms went from like a flu sinus to more tiredness, loss of appetite, which is probably the best thing that happened to me during that problem, during that timeframe. But, um, it's not a good thing, even if you're, I don't consider myself asymptomatic. I think I had, I was lucky to have very few minor symptoms of it. But it's not a good thing to go through. I went through it for about 12, 13 days. I've been recovered now almost a week and a half. But it's not a good thing and I really don't wish this on anyone.
Now Johnny, the wife, the kids, how are they?
I tell you it all honestly, I think we all got it. I just don't see how you could live in a household and not affect somebody indirectly. My kids are pretty good, you know, they, I think they lost a little sense and smell at days. So, you know, some of them are different times of this, the last couple of weeks. But I think we all got it and we were all lucky, you know, thank God, that we were able to, you know, deal with it home and not be worried about, you know, ventilators and, and, you know, hospitalizations and so forth.
Now, Mike, your parents got it, your mom and your dad, and they are elderly. I know one thing is our kids get it, the young, the strong immune system, it's on top of the line. Everything is fine, but unfortunately, as we get a little older, things change physically. They change in many aspects of, you know, with our bodies. How are your parents doing?
Yeah, Ben, and when you look at the numbers of the infections and you kind of alluded to it, even just last week, a week and a half ago, we had the county executive at our city council meeting. And the numbers are, you know, if you're 49 and under, you know, your survivability rate is, is, it's skyrocketed. And reality is, the older you get, the more the fatality, the numbers are, they're alarming. And the reason why is not, you know, this virus doesn't go after age. It goes after immune compromised. And if, if you hear a lot, even the news, you know, complications because of COVID, complications because of COVID. And, you know, my, you know, my dad had, you know, open heart surgery, he's 83 years old. My mom, you know, 77, you know, she is autoimmune compromised, you know, had cancer. So, you know, we're very concerned and, you know, it brings me yourself, you know, you get anxious. You get, you know, your, your mind starts, you know, working overtime, you know? You get confusion, anger, how, you know? I remember just in my mind, I'm like, how the hell did they get this? You know, they don't drive, they don't leave the house. And, and many of the symptoms that my brother John was just, I remember I would speak to my dad, that, you know, how do you feel, you know? And I remember, you know, a lot of common symptoms, you know, loss of appetite, a lot of aches and pains. You know, I know he did have a light cough, you know, my mom extremely tired, loss of appetite. But ironically, the two main symptoms that this first started been back in March, you know? Fever and cough, they don't have that, you know? And I remember, you know, John didn't have that either. And, you know, I'm always concerned about a fever for anyone. And I'm always just worried about their ability to breathe, they're, they're home by themselves. You know, unfortunately, again, you know, we have a big family, big support system. You know, my sister Lauren goes, you know, before that, you know, my elder sister Jeanette used to go in and we check up on them, but it's scary, you know? You know, this is not something where, you know, you can't even go take an Advil because they say Advil has side effects. It's, it's, it's the uncertainty and the facts of not knowing add to that anxiety and uncertainty, you know?
So Johnny, it seems like, you know, it affects mostly, affects mostly meaning it becomes, the survival rate is much less for 45 years old and up. So we safe, we are like 35. So, so we okay, we okay, we okay, John. Johnny, but now I want to bring it up, another, another aspect of this. You are a business owner and use, provide services to the community, Yonkers, West Chesa County in general. How does this, how has this crisis affected you as a business owner?
This is probably the worst thing that's ever happened to me in my 31 years of business. You know, we survived recessions, we survived winter storms that shut us down for a few days. But, you know, this is going to be a probably a two, two and a half month, you know, from eight, from March, April. You know, you're talking about at least a month and a half to two months shutdown. It's the worst thing that's happened for all of us in the limousine business.
Totally unprecedented, huh?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't see anything worse than this.
You know, certain things that happen in our country, world affects one type of business or another. This has affected every single business.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, there's really nobody really winning here except, you know? You know, we lost a lot of people, so, you know, as we all know, the funerals and the morgues have been very busy, but... And, you know, that's in a bad way too. This is, this is, you know, there's really no silver lining here, there's really no end to say that, you know what? This was what happened good. Usually when bad things happen, it's a good thing. I don't see good coming out of this, except for us just to even be more worrisome as, as this goes on.
Now, Lorraine Lopez says the Spanish immigrant community is highly affected. As you know, the minorities and Latinos have been affected in a way that is unprecedented. Okay, I think most than all other communities, you know, for many reasons, you know? We live in apartment buildings, sometimes multiple families live in the same apartment. A lot of the Latino communities are undocumented, not all, a lot. But we have to go to work, we don't have the luxury of saying, okay, the recommendation is don't go to work, I stay home. Those people, if they don't go to work, they don't eat, you know? Us, the rest, if we, if we don't go to work, we collect from unemployment or if the, our jobs continue to pay us, they don't have that luxury. What do you think about that, Mr. Kader, council president? You both Kaders, so I have to...
No, no, about, no, Lorraine, Lorraine opens up, you know, a conversation that's very important. Our most vulnerable in our community, you know, and, and, you know, for, for the members, for our residents that are not documented and they, they need to go to work, you know? There are several reasons. Ben, what, what I always try to look at is, is Yonkers doing anything different? And I look at other cities, you know? It's not a secret, the more dense the population areas of Yonkers, the more infections. And you just made reference to, you know, apartment buildings, people are more inclined, you know, to gather. That's similar in Baltimore, Philadelphia, Boston, you go out to Chicago or Los Angeles. You know, the big difference that, that I feel is services to help those that are in need. Services that are available to undocumented. And I could tell you that Yonkers does have that through Catholic charities. I just received, today is, kind of lose a sense, was it Thursday evening? You know, a message from Catholic charities who has, and they have a very good presence here in Yonkers. And they're able to help, be it with food, be it with help getting tested, be it with legal services, you know, any COVID complications. So it's important that our most vulnerable, documented or not documented, there are, there are services and agencies such as Catholic charities, you know? And I'm sure that, you know, we've been seeing that, you know, that there's a lot of nonprofits that are donating food. The problem is that this pandemic is so far ranging, there's still not enough. I told you when we spoke maybe about two or three weeks ago, that there'll be lessons learned. A lot of these issues are outside of local government control. You know, this is at a federal level when it become, you know, when it comes to testing and access to testing. But I think that we have to look inward as a local city government to see what could we have done better? You know, for something basic as, you know, parking meters, parking meters should...
I don't want you, don't go there yet, Mike.
Okay, no, no problem.
I have a series of questions and if, if you interrupt my script, then I don't know what to do.
Okay, all right. So, you know, I'm glad people see, I don't, you know, so Ben, at least they people see that these interviews, you know, they're not scripted, I didn't know you were gonna go there.
They're not, they're not, but I have a script. And if you derail my script, then I, I, I don't know which way to go.
It's, it's your show, I'm the guest, thank you. But, but again, it's important that people know there are services out there. I do want to say, if anyone needs any help, reach out to, to my office. You know, by email, just councilpresident@yonkersny.gov or call our office, 377-6060. Obviously, I'm active on social media, but sometimes our response time is not as quick as a phone call or, or an email. So Lorraine, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Now, Mike, with this whole climate that, you know, what's going on, these affects in many ways. Look, people don't go to work, some don't collect, people need food, they need to go out. They live in apartments, they're not able to pay the rent. And these landlords, many of them don't care. Look, you cannot pay the rent, but your problem cannot become my problem. I still have to pay the mortgage.
You know, Ben, this is a conversation, as you know, I'm a lawyer and I have my law office right, right on Yonkers Avenue and I practice law. You know, my brother mentions the limousine transportation. This is, this has affected lawyers and the court, you know, pretty much New York, the courts in New York state are pretty much closed by order of the chief administrative judge. So that's traffic court, city court, family court. There are certain aspects for emergency applications that you could file. What I would love to do, Ben, is to have something with you and I want to take off my council president hat and give a little, you know, legal guidance. I might, I want to be careful saying not opinion, just give some guidance to many of our Yonkers tenants on what they should be doing right now. The fear that I have, like you just mentioned, they're, they're not working, they're unable to pay their rent. The executive order that Governor Cuomo issued, it's not forgiving of rent. So let's, you know, so if your rent is $1,500 or whatever it is, 1,000, 15, 20, it doesn't forgive you for paying that rent. It just says that landlords are, are not allowed to start an eviction proceeding. And I think right now, you know, perhaps I could, you know, through an interview and live interaction with some tenants, we could give them some guidance on how to proceed. Because eventually that 90-day stay of evictions is gonna end and I would love to have that conversation with you in depth. I don't hear you.
I'm sorry, but we are going to leave that for next week. We have, we have an interview scheduled for next week. And next week we will be speaking in depth about tenant landlord relationship, the impact, what can we do? What does this, you know, like you said, a lot of people think that if something comes up, look, landlords are going to understand a little bit. That does not mean that you don't have to pay the rent, it's just going to be delayed. You're gonna have to pay it sooner or later.
Correct, and, and that, and that's what I fear. And, and Ben, you know, there's also the mental health aspects of it, you know? And I made reference to it, the anxiety, the nervousness, the confusion, you know? You know, the inability to get answers, you know? You know, there's a lot of mental health issues that are happening and we all have it, you know? You know, and, you know, during this pandemic, and I think that that's being, you know, overlooked. You know, child custody, child visitation, you know? There's, there's, I have some cases where, you know, children are speaking to one parent just through FaceTime or, you know, so these are issues that I think that we should discuss. And I know, again, I receive phone calls all the time for child support. I, you know, I have clients that say, listen, I, I receive child support every month, but I haven't received it. You know, what am I to do? So I would love to have this conversation with you concerning child support, child custody and the rent. And we'll definitely do it, it's just so much, I don't think that we have enough time to cover it right now.
So we will talk about that next week. Now Johnny, as a citizen of Yonkers, forget about your hat as a business owner, as a citizen of Yonkers. I remember where the pandemic just broke. Yonkers was a little bit reluctant of admitting or saying, look, we have cases in here. The school systems kept saying, no, school is okay, we're not shutting down. There were no known signs about infected people in Yonkers. That put a bug on my head, saying, gosh, Yonkers is one of the largest cities in West Chesa, in, in, in the state of New York. But somehow, we have no cases when that broke up. All of a sudden, we have most cases, then most, you know, almost the entire county. Do you think that it took us too long to accept the problem for whatever reasons?
You can't blame, it says I'm being muted.
No, 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 you're okay, Johnny.
Johnny, you're usually muted, you should be used to that.
You, this sounds like the Kader Show, like the Cuomo Show a couple of weeks ago. Ben, you know, you can't blame...
I'm not blaming, I'm just asking a question.
Single point, you can't ask like, did we do good, do we do bad? Because we haven't been through this, this is something that's brand new. It's like putting somebody in a car without a driver's license, he doesn't always do so.
No, no, Johnny, come on. You know, there is certain things that you don't need to go through to know what to do. Let me give you a good example. We never been through this, but we know that shooting lies all is not, you know, the way to cure this. There is certain things that we know what to do. We knew that this was infecting and affecting lots of people. So we knew that sooner or later, this will bloom in Yonkers. So I'm not blaming, I'm just asking, should we have reacted a little sooner? That's all I'm asking, not putting fingers, not saying anything.
How do you react to something you're not sure of or where it's gonna go? I mean, when this broke, I was in Florida, nothing was going on down there. It was quiet, everybody was on the beach, restaurants opening. Up here, in, you know, New York, people were getting nervous. I was getting texts, you know, saying, come home. And I'm saying to myself, why should I go up there if it's worse down here? It's not, you know, okay. And the week that I left, final week, everything gets shut down in Florida. They were not prepared down there neither, from what I've seen. So that's a real tough question. I mean, I mean, look at the, the president ordered two hospital navy ships into New York, California. They're being sent home in about two weeks, I hear. So, you know, the county has a hospital set up in the county center. I don't even believe that's being used. So we've done a lot of things in advance to get in front of the curve. This is a, this is a tricky pandemic. This is really, really, you can't, I, I don't see anything that we could have done any difference because we've done some certain things that we're not using today. There'd be, you know, like I said, with the two navy ships, the Jacob Javits, they're closing it down here at the end of June. I mean, it's a bad thing, there's no, there's, you know, there's no winning here at all. I don't believe we could have done anything any different.
Well, you know, I disagree with you.
You know what, you know what? If you really want to put the blame, I would, I would say, you know, based on what I've seen, going through Southwest Yonkers, a lot of people were in the streets. No mask, no mask, no gloves, within two, three feet of each other. You know, I seen a lot of negligence there.
Well Johnny, again, let me rephrase this, I'm not blaming on putting blame on anyone. All that I'm saying is, should we have reacted a little quicker? Because we could look at China and see what was going on. We could have looked at other states and see what was going on. We could go into our local hospitals and see, do we have enough ventilators here? We don't, we need to start acting now because sooner or later, we are going to need those ventilators and we don't have them. What do you think about that, Mike Kader?
Ben, I think you're right and, and my brother is right. There are certain things...
Let's record that.
Hey John, even a broken clock is right twice a day. So, you know, it's, you know, so you'll be right at the end of the day, it's in the PM. But, you know, Ben, well, my brothers are factual correct, you know? The naval ship is not being utilized and Javits, these are, these are things that Governor Cuomo and the president were able to work out. And I even know that the governor was very complimentary of the president and allowing these resources, the Army Corps of Engineers. And we all know all the stuff that was going on and, you know, the sparring back and forth between the governor and the president. But to go to your point, I absolutely agree with you, Ben, that local government could have done more, you know? And I don't, you know, we've seen the news, you know, it was in Asia, then it just started spreading. We live in a globalized world, you know, through globalization and, and easy access and the borders and, you know, the European Union. It was only a matter of time before, you know, it arrived at Kennedy Airport and New York Harbor. What I generally feel that municipalities such as a Yonkers could have done is, for example, we should have geared up an office of emergency management. That's an office we have and I'm, I'm, I'm scratching my head, I'm still trying to figure out what does the office of emergency management do? You know, we have, you know, we have an amazing police force, we have incredible fire department. You know, I'm, I'm curious, now is not the time to point fingers? We gotta get through this and I think I said, one of those lessons learned, you know, when we look back and what could have been done different, we're gonna have to see, is there something that we could do? Hopefully this never happens again, but if there is ever a pandemic and a good example, you know, they're talking about this, you know, we're gonna go down in the summertime because of the temperature, but then it'll come back in the fall. Again, this is what's open source, you know? Maybe we should be preparing in the summertime, you know? You know, maybe we should stockpile masks and, and things along those lines. And certainly, certainly, I think that, you know, one of the biggest things that local governments, not just Yonkers, you know, in any, in any city is, you know, residents need to have faith in their local government, in their local officials, and that's by providing information, you know? So there are certain things that can be done at a local level, even though we can't control ventilators and, and bringing in the Army Corps of Engineers, that's at a state and federal. I think giving as much information early on, having a plan of action early on, letting people know what's going on early on is, is important. That way, as things start happening, people don't go run in, in a pandemic and run for toilet tissue. You know, it's important that they know, okay, we're prepared, we're preparing for this together. You don't want residents to feel, I'm in this alone. And I think that's something that we could help do better at the local level.
Mike, as you guys know, we are live on Facebook and we have our audience engaging and asking questions. So I have a question here for the, maybe I'm saying the name wrong, but it's Timofey Yuriev. He's asking this question, is it safe for illegal immigrants to go to testing centers? Or will they take the risk of being deported on the spot or later on? Because once you go to the test, to the center, they might ask you some questions and you must, must leave certain information. People are afraid and if they don't go to be tested and they are positive, then we taking the risk of they contaminating the rest of the people on their own communities. What do you think about that, Mike?
I would think the best, you know, there's, so there's two issues here. We have access to testing and then we have immigration enforcement for our undocumented residents. What I would, I don't have a definite answer. Where I would call is Catholic charities who have advocacy and access for help. So to that viewer, you know, that, you know, that's a very important question, it's a very vital question. It's a very vital question. Um, contact Catholic charities, uh, and, and I think they will give you the best guidance. But from my understanding, from my understanding, and by all means, I'm not the authority on this, the testing sites set up by New York State, they're, uh, they're not asking for insurance or, or any prescriptions. So, you know, to, to, to be on the safe side, um, you know, you never know what's happening, uh, you know, on the federal level. I think Catholic charities will be the best avenue to go, to go to. I can't hear you.
Johnny, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Johnny, is there anything that you would like to say on this sub- subject?
Um, just, you know, practice the common sense that everybody's been saying. And, um, you know, don't take any different granted. If anybody has any elderly folks that don't live with them, check up on them, monitor, uh, their, uh, their condition. You know, thanks to my sisters that they pay attention to my parents and they notice things I don't notice. And that's very important to, especially with elderly and people already compromised with health issues, pay attention to their color of their skin and their breathing and things like that because you don't know if they got it. And, uh, you know, even your next door neighbors, not just family, you know, everybody should be looking out for everybody.
Yeah, John, maybe if you pass by mom or dad's a little more, you wouldn't notice those little details, you know, instead of coming from, instead of going by for quick lunch and leaving.
Okay, now we're going to go into another segment. Now, there are things happening in the city hall, even though you guys are not there. Uh, Mr. Council President, like the budget. How is that going?
Yeah, um, Ben, the budget was just introduced, uh, you know, last week. Can you hear me, Ben?
We can hear you. So, you know, this is the internet, once in a while, we.
Yeah, the Intranet, right? You know, once in a while it goes wrong. The budget was introduced, uh, last week, you know, it's, it's, it's a one point two billion dollar budget, you know, which funds, you know, obviously the municipal side and the, uh, education side. I'm looking at it, uh, closely. We haven't started the budget meetings. I believe our first departmental hearing. And it's out there, if I said it's Monday, May fourth. My initial reaction on the budget and, and I, as I get more information, Ben, my initial reaction are projections. What I'm really concerned about are our revenue projections. Again, you know, John, as, as a business owner, myself as a business owner here in Yonkers, the long-term economic effects, if we're losing income tax revenue, sales tax revenue, you know, prices of real estate, you know, the, the, the transfer tax revenue, this money that comes in, this is how we fund the city, is how we fund the work, uh, you know, uh, the workforce and other programs. So I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned that long term. I'm not looking at this budget just for, you know, twenty twenty one. I'm also looking for next year. What you don't want to be able to do, Ben, and this is important for residents, you can do two things. You can't overtax for some reason, and, and one, overtaxing is not gonna solve the problem. We seen that. And then number two, our residents, I don't care if you're a resident or a homeowner, they're suffering right now economically. So overtaxing is not the answer. That's number one. Then number two, we have to have plans. So back in January or February, the way the process is, you know, department budgets are given to the executive, which is the mayor. And then the mayor, you know, uh, amends and adopts accordingly. Now, January, February, and even early part of March, you know, as my brother said, people were on the beach in Florida and everything was good and economy and, and then all of a sudden, the light switch went off. So now all those numbers have to change. You know, just, you know, just think about it, you know, look at the price of crude gas, you know, uh, barrels, thirty dollars a barrel. There's always a trickle down effect. Another issue that we gotta see is aid. I, you know, the numbers that you're hearing from the state, you know, are in the billions of a deficit. If the state is not getting that, we're not getting it. And the number one question that I want to know is, for every million dollars we don't receive, what's your plan? What's your plan? The Board of Education. And, and I've been almost to a fault, Ben, I've, I've been critical of the Board of Education just because the way it's operated. We fund it, we give them a check and then they have their own trustees and the superintendent who run that. What are they going to do in the event of a deficit? And from what I'm hearing is, you know, their, their, their deficit is significant. And what's their plan? It's, it's still early in the process, but these are my goals. What I don't want to do this year, just put a Band-Aid and say, okay, Ben, we got over it, we'll worry about it in, in twelve months. I want, I would like to do almost instead of a twelve month, what's our eighteen to twenty four month plan? If the federal government, excuse me, if the state government isn't able to give us, there was a major article where, uh, you know, Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell says, you know, cities should go file for bankruptcy. That reminds me of an old ad back in the seventies where there was, I think it was like the New York Post or the Daily News, where, uh, president goes to New York, drop dead. That's what pretty much Mitch McConnell is telling, you know, major cities. If you don't fund the states, that way it's earmarked for siege. Who you're really hurting? Municipal workers, cops, firefighters, teachers. It's a major issue. You know, they're talking about these COVID packages, COVID package two and three and four. And it's, it's very important that you help small business. Absolutely. It's very important that you give, you know, unemployment. But it's important that there's money earmarked. And Ben, this is very important that your listeners, that there's, there has to be money earmarked for municipal government. Because ultimately, if the money's not there, how do we pay?
Yeah.
You know?
Now, uh, Mike, you know that there is a little delay between what we see on Zoom and what the people see on Facebook. There is a twenty second delay. And sometimes some questions come a little late. So we have an important question still in regards to COVID.
Okay.
In a case of a deceased in the family, how do residents dispose of the mattress of that deceased? Because might be bacteria there. So how do they dispose of it? Is that any mechanism in, in place now? That once a deceased's body is removed from the apartment, all the items that belong to that person are removed by trained personnel? Do you know?
You, you know, Ben, I got, you know, that is a question I didn't think about, you know, a, a, a scenario I didn't think about, and it's very, very important. You know, I will speak to the mayor about perhaps, you know, I mean, the resident, you know, wraps it up or tries to, you know, put something on there. And again, I'm thinking out loud, it's a very important issue and may, you know, uh, you know, and schedule appointments, you know, for the city to come pick it up. Perhaps, you know, that's something that, you know, it's, it's, you know, the, the resident, uh, your viewer that gave that question, that's a very, very.
Diana Sanchez.
Diana, that, that's a very important question. Yonkers has had hundreds of deaths. Not only are we, um, the largest in the county, you know, uh, you know, we have the most deaths in the county. It's, it's, it's something that, that needs to be, uh, what, what we don't want is just throw the mattress out, put it by the light pole, you know, go to, uh, put it at the usual dumping spots. Um, I think that, uh, the city has an obligation to pick up these mattresses. But I think that they have to be done methodically and not haphazardly. And that's something that perhaps we should, uh, you know, uh, you know, and the mayor has shown sympathy towards, uh, those affected. That's something that, that we should look into. And once I get a better information, I'll report back to you, Ben.
Now, give me a second. Now, there is something that everyone is asking and we want to know where does this stands. It's the meters, Mike.
Ben, if you have a call, Ben, if you have a call, take it, John could take over.
No, no, that's okay. Give me a second. I don't know how to, give me one second.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. Somehow, you know, sometimes folks, they, they see that if you don't answer once, they keep calling two, three and four times.
Yeah, they think the fourth time you're gonna get frustrated, you know, sometime, Ben, sometimes when that happens to me, I get so frustrated, can't you see I'm not picking up right now, you know, but, uh, yeah, that, that happens a lot.
Now, uh, the meters, you know, uh, I understand and the meters, it's more complex than just saying, look, we're going to suspend the meters. Because the meter, the money that comes from those meter funds a lot of other stuff that is budget issues, you know, and we are hurting now. So, but the people are saying, look, the suggestion is that we stay home. The suggestion is that, uh, we don't go out. And most people that live in the southwest of Yonkers don't have the luxury of having a garage with four or five car, you know, space like Johnny Kater. No, we have to park on the street. We have to park on the meters. So how is the city addressing? I know that something passed, I think, last week, but it's, it's not been executed.
Yeah, Ben, um, the meters is one of those things that, and this goes back to what I was saying earlier, certain things that local government we could do. You know, together working, uh, with my colleagues on the council, it passed five to two. My, uh, this was, uh, at our last city council meeting and there was a little debate over it. And the debate had to do with revenue. And that's a fair point. You know, we were just, I was, here we are, five minutes ago, I'm talking about, you know, the city needs money and but there comes a time where creating revenue is not as important as saving lives. So, you know, the council, we voted on this five to two over a week ago. And I even went on social media calling on an immediate and a, a stop enforcement of medias immediately, not a grace period, not a warning period and stop. When we're in a crisis, and this is what this is, this is a global health crisis. Yonkers is just like every other city. We needed an immediate stop of meter enforcement. Creating revenue is very important, but this is not one of those ways to create that revenue. I, you know, Ben, I, I don't know who's listening right now or who's following. You know, you call up the mayor's helpline, three seven seven help and tell him, we need help. You know, but it should be important that it is important, you know, when the mayor says, well, how do we replace that revenue? That's a fair and valid, uh, argument, you know, but right now, you can't, you gotta worry about people, not profit. And, uh, everyone, again, I'm, I can't put it more clearly, the council has done what it can do. I know, uh, Councilwoman Shanae Williams has been vocal about this. I know Councilwoman Tasha Diaz has been, uh, you know, vocal about this. I'm vocal about this. Uh, I think some community, community members. Hector Santiago may have started a, a, a petition about this. You know, I, I'm posting about it, we're talking about it right now. I, you know, there, there's that old adage, you know, the, the wheel, the squeaky wheel, you know, you know, gets the oil. I think you just gotta have to make noise, you know, you know, please use my office as the sound or the bully pulpit. The meter, you know, something needs to be done about meter enforcement, particularly, particularly when you have a la- residential area or an apartment building where a lot of the residents are relying on those meters. Ben, I can't tell you stay home, social distance, stay safe, but you know, go feed your meter every two hours. You know, it's, you, you can't get both. It's not fair. And, you know, this goes back to, you know, you people got anxiety, they're nervous, I don't have change, my app is not working. You know, it's, it's, it's just right now is not the right time.
Well, on that note, we conclude this interview. This is all the time that we had for today. So looking forward to speaking with you next week, Mr. Council President.
Thank you.
Johnny, we wish you a quick and full recover, recovery and the same for your parents and siblings. So thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us.
Thank you.
Ben, Ben, thank you so much. Hey, John, you know, it's actually, I, I know we texted, it's good seeing you. But listen, you didn't tell me the symptoms about loss of appetite. Clearly that was a weak symptom because not much, you look a little bloated there, brother. You know, but, uh, it's actually good to see you. Ben, thank you so much, my friend. We'll be in touch.
Johnny, take care.
You see the abuse, uh, that the big brother has to go through?
I see it. You know, it's been, it's been documented, it's on record. So, uh, you can, uh, start, uh, litigation now.
Take care, everyone be safe. Thank you.
Take care, guys. Bye bye.